Hello Niagara Falls family, friends and neighbors. This is Vincent Colley, candidate for Niagara Falls City Council this November. Coming at you with a video and I don't want to call it a comprehensive candidate guide, but I just want to relay some information that I think was that I think is important as you decide who you want to be as your three city council members, your three representatives this November. That's the majority, that's the three votes is the majority of the council and that's very important. But let's get started. Bottom line out of out front, we are on the wrong track as a city. I've heard many people say that. I believe that and and the reason why we're on the wrong track is mainly for two reasons. One, we have a subservient, acquiescent, submissive city council majority. That we're turning us from a free fall into a nosedive. And the second point of that is, is the absence of a resident focused, everyday people oriented, taxpayer rewarding, business friendly agenda for the whole city, not just a special group, not any special interest, but for every person that's living in Niagara Falls. And the reason and how that leads into is, we need checks and balances in our government. We have, we need separation of powers. There's an executive branch and there's a legislative branch. We have the mayor of the administration, we have the city council. The reason why we have a bling of that separation of powers and no checks and balances is because we have yes men on the council, we have rubber stamps on the council, and we cannot have any more of that. This election is so crucial, I can't begin to tell you how crucial it is. So I hope you hear this sincerely, the honesty, the integrity, the passion of my voice as I go through this information because I, I, I love positivity. I love, I want everybody to be joyful, everybody move forward, I want to think about growth, I want to think about being real to the people, being authentic, being genuine. But I believe there's some information that we all need to know as we come together to decide who we're going to have to represent us. As you know, I was on the city council before, I voted no for a lot of things. We currently have a number of issues going on, including Centennial Park in eminent domain, the animal shelter in Hyde Park, the hockey rink contract controversy and debacle, which we just was just voting on today. And that's, and if that didn't go through, that would have been a travesty. It's still a fight, the fight is still not done, but at least we're moving forward in the right direction for local business owners, for local people. So thanks to the city council. And number four, unfair law enforcement and code enforcement practices. Look at what's been going on with the operator and manager at Shortens, CJ Cox. There are many other issues, the cleanliness of the city, the garbage, the dilapidated houses, the potholes, of course, the roads. We have many issues and the people, those five people sitting on that in those council seats are gonna help determine what direction we going as a city. And I mean even going further, I'm not just talking about even, not just meeting yes men and not just rubber stamps, but I'm talking about city council people who are gonna ask the hard, tough questions. Are you even willing to subpoena the mayor and his administration if necessary? In order to bring transparency and accountability so that the people can learn. We've got to get serious about representing Niagara Falls and we as a city have to get serious about who's representing us. So let's go into these candidates and I'm gonna get myself off the way. My name is Vincent Colley, I'm homegrown here, born and raised. I was on the council in 2023, I ran in 2023. And even though I'm born and raised here, no one knew who I was back then. So hopefully, two years later, you know, you know who I am, you have a clue what I'm about, except for my family, they may have known and a couple of friends. So hopefully people are learning, but my only motive, no matter what you hear, my number, my public Facebook profile, my website, I only have one motive and that's to make Niagara Falls better for everybody. And we can even be better, watch it, we can be better than Niagara Falls, Ontario. But we have to get the right representatives in government. It's not for me, it's not about a pension, it's not about health benefits, it's not about prestige, power, I just want to solve problems. My job is the engineer, I've been an engineer since 2007, I love solving problems, that's my job. So I want to solve the problems of Niagara Falls with your help, of course, and Niagara Falls community and everybody that wants to see this city great. So that's me, got myself off the way. And again, as a city council member, I did my due diligence on every agenda, every agenda item and beyond. I went on, I have the records to prove it. I've said that I will send the administration questions on the agenda every week. Now you know the agenda doesn't come out till Thursday or Friday, even for the city council members, I work a full time job, city hall is closed during the week. So I would have to, in between that time, I'm making calls, sending emails, meeting people, learning, digging deep, asking the administration questions, trying to get a meeting with the mayor, meet with other city council members, all that in a short period of time. And I did it, I have the records to prove it and I take that tenacity, I take that job as a city council person so serious. Cause to me, it's not just about the talk, it's about the walk. You got to put in the work for the people. Again, I said, I would try to meet with the mayor before the council meeting one on one. I will talk to everybody, business owners, operators, I will continue to go above and beyond when I'm back on that city council seat. Cause I'm passionate about seeing Niagara Falls grow to the city we know it can be. So that's a little bit about me, that's, that's where I stand at. Any questions, man, please feel free to reach out anywhere I stand. The next candidate is Tanya Barone. Man, I met before either one of us was even thinking about running for city council, I had crossed, crossed paths with Tanya Barone. We met at, we met at the, one of the meetings we met at was the Board of Education. I don't have kids, but I was still speaking out on behalf of the kids at the Niagara Falls Board of Education meeting, I met her and her husband there and that was sort of our first crossing path. And then a few years later, I was on the city council, I voted no to the pitching, I did my due diligence, there was no information, I voted no for that because that's what I do. I felt comfortable voting no because I just didn't get any information, let alone I was turned away to get it. But we were discussing the pitch chick, the animal shelter, the municipal shelter here in Niagara Falls and Tanya Barone was already there speaking on behalf of the wildlife and animals. And by that organic meeting, that's where our paths crossed and actually, not only did they cross, they merged. So ever since 2023, we've just been, been, been helping the city issues, you know, fighting the city issues together and she stepped up, just a normal citizen, she stepped up to run because he just seen all the issues that were going on and she said, man, I gotta do something about it. So that's where she stands, that, that's, that's Tanya Barone. Again, this is not a comprehensive guide, this is just information that I just feel people should know about. We have Dante Miles, he's incumbent during a write-in vote and he has a record of how we vote. Check the city councils, check the city council meetings, attend the city council meetings. What do you hear? What do you see? Here's some questions we should be thinking when we talk about incumbents and when we look at, uh, uh, well, should we put this person back in? Has Dante been asking the hard questions? Has he been fighting for the people? Has he been pushing for transparency and accountability? Has he been pushing for responsiveness from the council and the administration? Has he been working for the people? The average, and by people, I mean the average, everyday Niagara Falls resident and business owner operator. You may not see them all, you may not hear them all, but they're out there. And the silent ones, I want us to be their voice for them. We should have city council members that's speaking on their behalf too. The big ones and the small ones. Has Dante provided explanations for his votes? His thought process, how he thinks, his reasoning, why he's voting the way he's voting? Has he provided any information to the people? He's, you know, as to me, the city council people are the number one investigators because they have access to behind the scenes. That's how serious I take it. Most people just think, oh, city council, the budget and legislation. And that's totally true, no question about it. But we need leadership in these positions, we need people who are gonna go to extra miles, people who are gonna dig deep for information to bring back to the people when the information is not there. So has he provided information to the people? Are you satisfied with the job he's doing? Why, why not? Can you explain that to somebody at Frankie's Donuts? Can you explain that to somebody at a community event at the neck, at the porch fest? Can you have this peaceful, nonviolent, constructive, forward conversation about our city representatives? What they are doing and what they have not done? Is he a part of why we're on the wrong track? Is he part of the submissive majority? Or not? Why, why not? Can you have that discussion? Can we have that discussion as a city? Can we get serious about who's gonna represent us? Does he deserve to get back on the council? Why or why not? So that leads me to David Zajak, he's also another incumbent. I'm gonna say the same thing, check the council meeting videos, attend the council meetings. What do you see? What do you hear? Same questions, has he been asking the hard questions? Has David Zajak been fighting for the people? Has he been pushing for transparency and accountability? Has he been working for the people, the average, everyday person? Has he provided explanation for his votes? Has he provided his thought process? How he thinks, what he thinks, why he thinks it, his reasoning? Are you satisfied with the job he's doing? Same questions, no different, he's on there, go through the, I recommend checking out the city council videos. I try to cut my videos up so you can know what I've, how I stood and where I stood on the issues when I was on the council. I have no problem showing you that, those videos, cause I stand 100% behind him. Does he deserve to get back on the city council? Why or why not? So that turns us to the non-incumbents. Number one, John Ricardo. A name that's been around for years. He didn't get enough certified signatures to get on the Republican line. That means he didn't do enough work to get the right people that he could get on a, on a major party line. You tell me, what does that show to you? What does that tell you? As it is reported, is he playing spoiler? We don't need to keep recycling the same names, no offense to anybody. And again, please see the passion, the honesty, the sincerity, the, the, the love I have for, for this position, for the city, the respect for the people. I want us to start from here on out, let's just be the first election where we start putting serious people on their council who want to work for the people and see the city move forward. Next up is John Kennedy. He's the former head of DPW and now wants to be on the council. Currently, we have, we already have a former council member that's now the current head of the DPW. Do you see the flipper rule there? Do you see, did, did that, let me just say that again, we have a former head of DPW who's wants to be the city council, but now we already have a current DPW who was a former city council person. So it's the flipper rule already. So right there, that, you know, what's, you know, what's going on there? Are we just recycling the same people? And you, there are people out there, I do not mean any disrespect to any of these candidates. I've given this in love and truth, there's no disrespect, I have no axe to grind with anyone, I have no personal attack, no personality issues, John Kennedy is a nice guy, any of these people, I would have dinner with them and we could talk all day about city politics, state politics, national politics, football, the bills, anything. This is not personal, professional to be. Trying to just get all of us together to find out who are the best people to represent us. John Kennedy, nice guy, Dave Zajak, nice guy, Dante Miles, nice guy. But nice is not gonna cut it, we need tough candidates to get us on the right track and off the wrong track.
Out of these candidates you're talking about outside of Dante Miles and Zajak, have these candidates even been present consistently at the city council meetings? I, I know personally that you yourself and Tanya Barone have been present, but I didn't even know that John Ricardo was an option.
Exactly.
And I didn't even know that Zajak was running again, I haven't heard, I haven't heard any conversation from him at all. And then far as John Kennedy, they've been so quiet.
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 We should, as, as, as people who are supposed to be on the campaign trail, getting out there, getting their face out there, you, I mean, that's a great question Frank and I hope the people are asking the same question, have they seen him?
Have we seen him?
Have we, have you asked them a question, have you asked them about the tough issues? What was their answer? Were you happy with the answer? What answer did it give you? Did it pass the muster test? So this first video, as you're seeing, as you're seeing these people with the vest on, that's DPW workers. They're taking, removing private property. And as this video plays on, you'll see them just, this, that, that's private property. Just imagine you come at home, you check your security cameras and you see this, what's going on? Removing, removing your stuff from your property.
Man, I can't believe it did be like that, man.
You'll see video number two. It's hard to watch. Can you imagine coming home and seeing this stuff happening to your equipment?
No cares in the world.
And the comment that he told me.
They never flagged me, they never cited me, they never did nothing.
DPW never flagged me, never cited me, never did nothing. Can you imagine thousands and thousands of dollars just destroyed, just like that? Understand what that video was showing. We heard about what happened on Ontario with the garden, we heard about that, that's under the, the current DPW head. That couple has bounced back better than ever, just visited them. But we can't keep having stuff like this happen to normal citizens, to just residents living in our city. If this is gonna be done, the right steps should be taken, the right process, it should be done with care, it should be done with honor, integrity, with respect. You'll see the resignation letter come up, he resigned, and don't forget to check that date, you'll see the date, now look at the date on the resignation letter. Those videos happened before he resigned, this happened on his watch. He resigned saying the mayor was heading in the right direction. Do you think we're headed in the right direction now? No offense to John Kennedy, I'll see him whenever I see him, I'll say hi, I'm not backstabbing, I don't, that, that's not how I work. It's just information that I just think we all need to know as we vote.
You're saying that John Kennedy was ahead of DPW at the time that these first videos were playing?
Yes, sir.
Then he resigned, you said that it was heading in the right direction?
Yes, sir.
Are you gonna bring that clarity out?
Yes, sir.
Where his heart is and his mind is at?
Yes, sir.
Where he navigates, okay.
Is this direction we want to keep going in? So now he wants to be on the council. In my opinion, we just can't allow this to be in Niagara Falls. Again, question, is this someone who can and will provide the check and balance on the mayor and the administration? What do you think? Yes, sir.
So in that it sounds like right now, if he believes that the mayor is heading in the right direction, it almost seems that he will always align himself up with what the mayor wants to do and that's almost what we will call a rubber stamp.
That's a question I bring to, I want, you know.
Yeah.
That's the information I'm bringing, that's why I want the people to, to, this is stuff that you own, we know all the guys. So that leads me to the next candidate, Noah Munoz. Again, nothing wrong, no, nothing personal, again, I'm not in real estate, I'm not trying to compete for any job, I'm just focused on getting the right people in city council. I say hi, I never, any disrespect, if you watch my city council videos, when I'm on the other side of the podium, I call, I talk to the city council, always with respect, with care for the position as human beings. Uh, I, I just believe everybody has value, we, everybody has work, but man, we are talking about moving forward with the right city representatives. So there's an article, you may see it on the screen, it's called, you know, Niagara Falls City Attorney. It was not a legal sale from the Niagara Falls Reporter by Frank Parlato. Everything about Frank, that's between you, but this article was a great article and I recommend reading it. And I'm just gonna pull some highlights from it, if you want, I'll try to save you the time for reading it, but it can get confusing, so I'll leave, I'll let Frank know the link, I'll pull up the article and he'll have that link there for you that anybody wants it. But let me just pull some quotes from there. Perhaps the biggest controversy in that election, this was in 2021 timeframe, centers around the sale of an old vacant house in Niagara Falls, New York, 424 Memorial Parkway. In 2017, the city put 424 Memorial Parkway, it's 3,100 square feet, five bedroom house, assessed for $48,000. They put it up for sale, it was rundown and in need of extensive repairs. Another quote, on July 26, 2016, the city sold 424 Memorial Parkway to Callie and Melcher, this couple. As a condition of the low price they got for $1,000, the city required the couple to renovate the house and live there, or else the property would revert back to the city, which is good. If they don't do what they said they're gonna do, not counting the low price, I don't, we could talk about that all day, you know, but at least there was a revert back clause that said, if you don't do what you're gonna do, we take it back. So the story continues. After closing, Callie and Melcher started renovations, but it soon became apparent that renovations were more difficult than expected. They did not fix the house, they did not live there, in fact, the couple broke up. This is all public, so I'm not revealing anything, I don't know these people, let's get that, I don't know them, I have nothing against them either. Picarello, who was the head of the Niagara Falls Community Development, she should have enforced the contracts and verdict clause and took possession of the property. Instead, when Callie and Melcher asked Seth if they could try to sell the property to someone else, Seth said he wanted to help find a solution for renovation and the purchasers in violation of the terms of their contract. But somehow, the city council was not told about a sale until after the house was sold and closed to someone else who happened to be a dyster supporter, the current, the previous mayor. Callie and Melcher sold the house to Karen Mock, a dyster supporter, for $10,000, 10 times more than what they paid for the house in December 2018. Oh, Karen Mock is Noah Munoz's mom. Seth did not object, although he admitted the department did assume that it would be notified before the sale rather than after. Multiple parties had expressed interest and inquired about buying the property. So imagine, and to put this, just to summarize the scenario, you have, you have a piece of property that you're trying to sell, you got a map, you got a bunch of buyers trying to buy it, it's 1,000, you know, 10,000, 15,000, 20,000, whatever it is, but you sell it to, would you sell it to the lowest bidder?
No.
No, you wouldn't. Seeking to learn that when it would be rebid so that they might come to compete to buy. So these buyers hearing about this house, they're all inquiring to come buy it, as I just was explaining. But the property, however, was never rebid. It was purchased by Mock on December 6, 2018 from the couple who did not have clear title. Mock told Seth her son, Noah Munoz, would live in the house for five years and renovate it within one year, just as the couple had agreed to do. In order for the purchase to have been legal, the city council had to approve a deviation from the contract. The sale to Mock, and, and again, I've met Karen, say hi to Karen, I will always say hi to Karen, love Karen, I love my mom too, just like Noah loves his mom. Again, I've said, I would keep saying this, this is not any disrespect, this is not a personal axe to grind, this is just information the voters, I believe, the voters should have going into this final season of our election. So as I continue, the sale to Mock might have gone unnoticed, but members of the Memorial Parkway Block Club found out that the property had been transferred without anybody else getting a chance to bid on it. They were upset, after all, Mock had gotten more than her fair share of sweetheart deals. Now let's look at the sale history of this property of 424 Memorial Parkway. In 2015, this, the city, the city owned it, city of Niagara Falls. The city, in 2017, the city sold it to this, to this, to the couple, the, the couple. In 2018, the buyer, one was Karen and the other was Noah. And the seller name was the other person on the couple. So you have one couple, one person of the couple was listed as the buyer, but then the other person of the couple was listed as the seller. And the buyer was Karen Mock and Noah Munoz. In 2021, Karen Mock sold the property to a municipal corporation, organization, which was a, a division of the city of Niagara Falls. But then, back, it was back date, so that sale from Karen Mock to the municipal corporation was 421, but then it had to go back because the city of Niagara Falls then became the seller and sold it back to Karen Mock and Noah Munoz on 42. So very, take a, look at this document again, rewind if you have to and pause to see the convoluted history, sales history of this property. And if, if that was the only property, it's still back, but it's not the only property. And the, the story continues. A few years ago, Seth helped arrange a city-owned Chilton Avenue apartment, house be sold to Mock or a company owned by her for $500. The Chilton Avenue property had an assessed value of $37,260 and came with $40,000 reimbursable for grant renovations. Seth had said at the time that it was natural that someone on his committee should get an almost free house from the city. Before that, Mock purchased a property on Memorial Parkway for $500 from the city. According to a neighbor, Mock failed to remedy code violations on a structure on the lot she owned adjacent to her home. The city demolished it and she failed to pay the bill for demolition. The city then took the property, then put it up for sale and Mock actually purchased it from the city at a much lower price than would have, would have cost her for the original demolition. In short, she got a free demolition. This is all from Frank Parlato's public article. An internal email sent by city attorney Craig Johnson reveals that city officials knew there was no question regarding the legality. This was an illegal sale. Here's a quote, and with inside, a quote from the city attorney. The fact of the matter is that the city council approved the sale of 424 Memorial Parkway to the couple and as part of that sale imposed certain conditions which were among your home ownership auction conditions. The city council is the only entity that can grant a reprieve from complying with conditions that it imposed. So again, having the right city council people makes all the difference in the world about the business dealings, about the transactions that's going on in our city. Another, another property that has an interesting sales history is 437 Memorial Parkway. In 2004, you have, you can see it on the screen here, Salvatore and Karen were the buyers and the seller was another private individual. But then, in 2005, Salvatore ends up selling it to Karen. So they were listed as buyer one and buyer two on the first, but then on second type it's just Karen alone. Karen sells it to Niagara Falls Development LLC, which is her company. But then in 2023, somehow the city has it now. And then they sell it back to Niagara Falls Development a year later. So again, another conspicuous sales issue. And in 2023, I was on the council and I voted no on a property, 436 Memorial Parkway. So I'm not telling you anything that I haven't done behind somebody's back, I was on the city council in 2023 and I voted no on the sale of 436 Memorial Parkway because I didn't have enough information to, to make a, a qualified vote. I'm hearing things from the community, I'm hearing things here, I just didn't have enough information to do what I need to do as a city council person. So if, nobody wants to table things to get more information, I have to vote no and I stand by all my no votes. So 436 also has an interesting history. So in 2014, the city of Niagara Falls sells it to the Isaiah 61 Project for $500. And then, in 2020, Isaiah Project sells it back to the city of Niagara Falls for some undisclosed amount, don't know how much that was for, that's in 2020. But in 2023, I was on the council and the council approved the sale of Memorial Parkway in 2023. And it's 2025 and there's still no record of it. Now I could be wrong, um, maybe there's something with the delay of getting this on here, but that still is not showing up in the history. So just weird history. Now, why did you go through all that, it's about Karen and mom? Cause again, Noah Munoz, there's the connection there, that's a son, I mean, I love my mom too. it, there's a connection there. That's a son. I mean, I love my mom too. I take care of my dudes, wanna do things for. But man, that, that, you gotta, you can't, do you see, do I, I'm trying to be delicate with this situation because I don't want it to be personal. This is not personal. I love both of them. I have a, I can have dinner right now when they hear this. I will have dinner right now and talk about any of this information. But up until this point, I haven't heard anything, any responses, anything to any of this material. So again, Noah Munoz is trying to get on the city council. I ask the question again, is this someone who can and will provide the check and balance on the mayor and administration?
Um, that was a lot to unpack.
A lot.
Um, so Noah's mom is in real estate with her son.
Yes.
So whatever, whatever structure is happening is really a collaborative effort of negotiation and conversation. Because they're, they're together. And I think that uh, as you speak about how these things are going back and forth and being flipped, if, it shows the game that's being played.
Yes, sir.
And the thing that they're taking advantage, and how they're taking advantage of things and how the city
Yes.
has allowed it to happen.
Yes. And it's also part of it.
Part of, oh yeah, for sure. And, and it's like, there's no way. And this, here's my challenge too, because I haven't seen these same opportunities given. I got five hundred dollars. And, and you didn't get a say that I, like, the community has access to that kind of revenue that can say, okay, if I can get this house for five hundred or a thousand dollars and the requirement is that we rehab it within a year's time to get it to a place. There are organizations, there are people who could do that and work on that periodically. But I'm not hearing that being offered to the community, and that's disturbing as well. So just something to consider.
Absolutely not. I appreciate any, I just wanna hear your perspective.
Yes.
And any questions, I, you know, I do the best I can answer, but I'm just, I'm reporting on what's already reported and just bringing it to the people.
Yeah. I used to do real estate.
Oh.
I had my real estate license and there's a responsibility of having your fiduciary duties. And some of what you're talking about is against the standard of what you should be operating in for your responsibilities. And that, that backhand side deal needs to be checked.
Yeah.
And if you're not checking it now in your business, how can we expect you to check it in the organization administration and that process? So.
Man.
Yeah.
So finally, to wrap it up, Bridgette Miles, I know her mom just passed away. My condolences, just, just learned about that this past Sunday. And again, this is a bad timing. I'm sorry. Uh, I know it's tough. I can't imagine. Um, but, you know, you know, that, you know, obviously very delicate. I mean, I, I, I made my, my, my beliefs and I don't like to attack people. I just don't. It is hard to do. It's not easy to do this. It's, it's, I don't like attacking people, but it, it, this information has to be known. I just, you know, I'm not trying to get anybody in trouble. I, I, I want information to come to the, to the public that this is how we decide who's our elect, elected representatives. So we know she is sympathetic to me. She's made that very clear. I have a video.
I thought about it, kept it together. And the only one that was willing to help me was Mr. Rizdaino. I set up a meeting with Mr. Rizdaino. He listened. He listened to everything I had to say. And he told me he heard about my story. And he said, whatever I wanted to do, he would be there to help me. I worked at the city for eight years. I've been on the inside, looking out, and I've been on the outside, looking in. The only way to make that change is to give it over to a new set of hands. We have one chance to get it right this time. We need to vote for Mr. Rizdaino.
But she's very sympathetic to the mayor, you know, and there's nothing wrong with that. I'm not knocking that. I'm not bashing it. It's good to have passion, uh, emotions, feelings. I'm, I'm not counting that. But you know, we're talking about city council moving forward, getting on the right track. She had issues with her petition to even get on the ballot. There were allegations. Miles had other people gather signatures and then sign the affidavit as if she witnessed. Local reporting shows that too. I personally had family who was part of it and has, and he had friends whose names were listed on the petitions. And I reached him and he said, I didn't sign that. And he said, those are my friends. They didn't sign that either. She was brought to court. This was litigated in court. She was brought to court for petition fraud. The court didn't say she didn't do it. The court just said, ah, she wasn't served properly. Which may have been due to address issues. But, but bottom line, she wasn't served properly. So nothing happened, no consequences, no accountability.
Pause right here.
Yes, sir.
This is almost like being arrested for a crime, but because you didn't read the Miranda rights, you didn't go through that process. It's kind of dismissed. Not saying that you didn't do it.
Right.
But just because it was done properly.
Right. Put up properly, processed, higher level, exactly. And to your point, perfect, to your point, in Florida, obviously another state, not New York, but just to give you an example. In Florida, a woman was charged with seventy-two counts each of petition fraud and perjury for every name that didn't belong on the petition. All charges are third degree felonies. And according to reporting, this is the petition process. Being a city council person, being an elected official has stature in the city, state, and federal highest. That's a recognized taxing body. And you're cheating on the petition process. Is this someone who can and will provide the check and balance on the mayor and administration? This kind of fraudulent activity is what we should be focused on, what we need to be focused on and eliminate this election. If they're gonna cheat at, and cheat at the, and I don't mean that directly, but if you're gonna do this fraudulent activity to get on the ballot, what happens when you get on the ballot? It is the death knell of our representative for of government, the death knell, the death toll. It dies if we can't choose the people who we want to elect us. And there's something else going on. We want the winners to be the real winners and the losers to be the losers, not wait, not tipping the scales, not cheating, not any of that. We can't have election integrity issues. We just can't. With ballot harvested and absentee voted, the chances of that are exponential to have election integrity issues. It's just unacceptable and we shouldn't accept it. So it's definitely, is this not, is it with, is that not a possibility? If there was a, I, I, I've knocked on doors where the people have moved one, two, three years ago, but their names are still on the thing. That person can get an absentee ballot, absentee ballot till that sent to that house filled out and sent in and nobody knows the visor. One fraudulent ballot, one fraudulent vote is one too many. Come on, Vince, you don't expect there to be zero cheating. Yes, I do. And we all should expect zero cheating. Now there's gonna be mistakes made if you bubble outside, if you, if you do this, if you do, you make a mistake, your, your pen dies or your pen explodes or the, the ink, sure, there's a process to do that, to cure your ballot. But man, the absentee voting, the ballot harvesting, man, Niagara Falls, that's what's gonna trip us up if we don't be careful. If we don't watch it, we gotta be vigilant. If there was no justice or accountability before, why not cheat and do it again? What's gonna stop you from, hey, I worked the first time, I didn't get, nothing happened, why not do it again? We just can't, we, we can't have that. That's, that's my biggest fear. It's my biggest fear, my biggest worry. We are going to need the community to help us. We all gotta pitch in on this. It's gonna be a community effort. Let's all be watchdogs. Let's all participate. We need the right, right representatives to stop going down the wrong track and get on the right track. So we gotta have a clean election. We gotta have fair elections. Again, I'll say this again and again and again. All of these candidates, I have dinner with them. I talk to them about any issue. I have no problem, nothing at all. I am everywhere. I'm at all the city council meetings. I'm on Facebook. I'm all, I'm, I'm out in community meetings. I'm at the neck. I'm at the aquarium. I'm at here. I'm at Tim Hortons. I'm at Frankie's. I'm at all of these. I'm at Toms. I'm at Wegmans. I'm all out there. I can, you can talk to me about any issue, anywhere, anytime. Ask me any question. Ask me the hard questions. Ask me the tough questions. Please do. I want you to. I wanna know what you think. I wanna know what's on your mind. I wanna know what, what, give me your feedback on what I'm saying. Do you think I'm attacking these people? I don't. I'm just giving you information. I'm not making any of this stuff up. I have documents. There's reporting. Now, whether or not you trust the reporting, that's not, that, that, you know, that's not, not me, but we should have somebody counteract that then. Let's have a debate, a peaceful, nonviolent, constructive debate on everything I said. I would love to have that. So Niagara Falls, my last words, if you're not registered, let's get you registered. Very easy process. And once you do get registered, get engaged, get informed, get involved. If you're watching this video, please watch the whole thing. Probably should have said this at the beginning, but watch this whole thing. I'll probably break this up to give bits and pieces here, but I recommend watching the whole thing. Share it with a friend. Pass it to your family. Let's set records for the number of people that voted, because the primary was a low turnout. Let's set records about how many people are gonna come out to vote, how many people that care, because there is hope to be had. There is hope. We can do this. We can move forward. But we're gonna need everybody to come on out, man, get involved, get engaged, and let's make Niagara Falls better than it's ever been before. Thank you, friends. See you on the trail.